To order this meeting of the Planning Board for May 2, 2024. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Town of Burlington will be holding the May 2, 2024 meeting as a hybrid meeting. The Governor issued an executive order on March 12, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March 31, 2025.
As always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on the agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Those seeking to attend remotely may do so via the following. Townofberlingtonwebx.com is the URL. Our meeting number is (2346) 213-8296, and the meeting password is 1645. You can join the WebEx meeting by phone at (617) 315-0704. To those people who are looking to participate online, please raise your hand in the virtual meeting, and staff will send you a request to unmute at the appropriate time. This meeting is being broadcast on BCAT Government Channel. You can find that on Comcast 99, RCN 15, and Verizon 41. It's also streamed via Facebook Live on the BCAT Government Facebook page.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is board reorganization, but we are going to postpone that because we don't have a full board. Later this evening, when we do, we will do the organization. May I have a motion to table? Item 2.
Motion made, Madam Chair.
Second.
And we need to have... Oh, no, we don't. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's 5-0. So, we also have some continuances tonight. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to take Items 8C and 8D together and out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0. Item 8C is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.3.2.6, outdoor storage of supplies and equipment incidental to permitted uses, subject to requirements for location, lighting, screening, fencing, cover, and safety precautions of zoning bylaws. One Bedford Street, A. Com Tishman is the applicant. Item 8D is a discussion, request for approval of a minor engineering change. One Bedford Street, A. Com Tishman is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to continue these matters to the Planning Board meeting of May 16, 2024, at the request of the applicant in an email dated April 30, 2024.
Second.
All those... Wait a minute. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is it 6-0?
Five.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to take Items AE and AF together and out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 6-0. Item 8E is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.2.7.9, hazardous and toxic materials, chemicals used, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the zoning bylaws. One Rounder Way, ACO Property LLC is the applicant. And Item 8F is a continued discussion, request for approval of a minor engineering change. One Rounder Way, ACO Property LLC is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to continue these matters to the Planning Board meeting of May 16, 2024, at the request of the applicant in an email dated April 30, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 6-0. If it is the will of the Board, I would like to suggest that we take the reorganization off the table and proceed with six members. If anyone would like to... You can either agree or disagree. Let me know what everyone thinks. Sure.
Usually we... Is Brenda not going to be here?
I think she's coming, but I... Okay, why don't we do a little bit more?
Unless it's absolutely necessary, I think.
We can do public participation and announcements, and then perhaps take it up again? Sound okay?
Up to you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is public participation. If there's anyone here in the audience or online who would like to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda, please come forward or raise your hand. Seeing no one, we will move on to announcements.
All right. Up on the screen, you are going to see a flyer for the MBTA Communities Public Information Session. This will be the second one of these sessions, and this is going to be next Tuesday, the 7th, and that will be at 6:00 PM. And this will be an all-virtual meeting held on Microsoft Teams. This has been posted on our planning socials, as well as on the town calendar, where you can click the link, and that will bring you directly to the meeting at 6:00 PM next Tuesday. The following night, next Wednesday, ZBRC will be meeting at 6:30, and that will be via Zoom. And then May Town Meeting will be on Monday, May 13, at 7:00 PM, and it is likely that it will be continued to Wednesday, May 15, then potentially to the following Monday, May 20, and possibly on May 23, as well. All of those sessions of Town Meeting will be at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. The Burlington Community Health Fair will be Saturday, May 11, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and that's at Burlington High School Gym. And then Household Hazardous Waste Day is Saturday, May 18, from 8:30 to 12 at the Fox Hill School. And finally, the School of Rock Musical Event will be happening at the Sculpture Park on Saturday, May 11, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM.
Thank you. Staff, we have a message that Brenda is in the waiting room. Do we need to do something to get her in?
Um, let me... Let me text.
A waiting room?
There shouldn't be a waiting room.
Madam Chair, I have one extra announcement.
Oh, yes, please go ahead.
Sure. I just wanted to note that I was able to catch the High School Musical this year, which I try to do every year. This is Shrek the Musical. And I can tell you that the folks, as usual, did a great job, and it was last weekend, and it's this weekend as well. So if you hadn't had a chance, and you have nothing to do this weekend, I think it's Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday matinee to wrap it up. You know, great talented kids, as usual, and one of them actually performs well on his knees.
Yes.
Which is gotta be quite the feat, so thank you, Madam Chair.
Lord Farquaad.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes. That was impressive. It was a really good show, so if you haven't seen it yet, try and catch it.
So, what are we thinking? So, I'm trying to figure out from Jen, from our admin, if there is a waiting room for this meeting. The link should be available on the town website, on the town calendar.
Try it, yeah.
And it should be, you know, in the meeting preview I sent you guys.
She is retrying.
Excellent. Okay, perfect. Beautiful.
Well, we have no legal notices of interest, no nonapprovals, and no administrative matters. So as soon as we do the reorg, we will be moving on to Item 8 on our agenda, Matters of Appointment. Luck?
Yeah, she's... It looks like the link shared is old, so she says she's... Email a current link or phone number. Okay, thank you, Caleb.
I'm going to send her the link to the...
I'll just sign it.
To the town calendar. They should bring it right. Why don't you click on it?
Can you just copy the meeting link? Yeah, we're gonna...
It's also on the town website, right?
That's what I'm sending. That's the easiest way.
I have a little short agenda.
Mm-hmm. Right?
Why don't you ask Brenda about an email? If she might.
We could do that. She's in the process. We could take Item 9 out of order if someone wanted to make that motion.
Okay.
Yeah, moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item 9 on our agenda is minutes. The first one is for April 4, 2024, and April 18, 2024. But, okay. Has anyone had... Has everyone had a chance to look them over?
Yes.
Okay. I'm ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the meetings of April 4, 2024, and April 18, 2024.
Madam Chair, I had a revision to the April 18 one. So as April 18 as amended.
Yep, I can make that.
And April 18 as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So it is 5-0-1.
It is online now.
Brenda is online. Welcome, Brenda. Thank you. So may I...
I'll show you your request, unmute. There you go.
So I am looking for a motion to take the Item 2 off the table for reorganization.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, abstained, so the vote is 7-0. So I am ready to entertain motions for nomination for Planning Board Chair.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to nominate Bill Gaffney for Planning Board Chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 7-0. Great. I would like to make a motion. Can I do that, or do I...
Absolutely. You can. You're not chair anymore.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Jessica Sutherland for Planning Board Vice Chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0.
And I would like to make a motion to nominate Tony Anatola for Planning Board Member Clerk.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're gonna do a quick shuffle.
Thank you, Brenda.
I'm dropping off. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good place to have a show.
6-0.
Changes.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Member Leroux. And I'd like to thank Member Leroux for all the work she's done as Chair over the past...
All the years, we tried to con you into this, and we found you.
Swear there are no bribes involved.
Yes, absolutely.
She just didn't have enough to do since you retired.
That's absolutely correct. So thank you for all your support. Appreciate it. Let's move on. If we had the continuances, we are now on to... It looks like Item 8A. That is a public hearing, the application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 12.1.5, the PD special permit of zoning bylaws, 225 Mill Secks Turnpike, FK Partners, Burlington LLC is the applicant. So this is a continuation from, I think, the last time we met. Staff, is there any updates that we have on that?
We just... It was approved by Conservation Commission. We don't really have any substantive comments on it. You know, I think that the redevelopment of a historic site is, you know, something that we've been waiting for, and this board has too, so I think it's a good...
For the people who don't know, this is the Kent Cottage.
The Kent Cottage, that is correct. Thank you. Thank you, Member Cavino. And so the applicant, any updates from the last time?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Board. Congratulations on your appointment. Christine Hung from Reamer &amp; Bronstein. With me tonight, I have Christian Lurie. Sorry, she's pinch hitting for Katie N. Reichenberg from Howard Stein Hudson, but she did most of the work anyway, so she's very familiar with the project. And then we have Ben Finnegan from the applicant. We really don't... The only update that we have was that we received conservation approval last week, and that was really our only update. So we're hoping to get approval tonight from the Board. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments from the Board? I'll start over to the right. Member Cavino?
I know that when the... This went before Town Meeting, right?
Yes, in 20... Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. This was at the 2022 Town Meeting. There was an update to the network drive at Northwest Park, PDD, now known as Blue Sky Drive, to change the site development and concept plan and the use table in the PDD to allow for, I think it specified, nine units of housing on this site, and so it was a very specific change, and that was approved at Town Meeting.
So it doesn't... Obviously doesn't include any affordable housing, and that's what the $50,000 is supposed to be?
So that was negotiated at Town Meeting, again, through you, Mr. Chair. That was negotiated through Town Meeting. There was a letter that was received from, I think it was with Norbloom, and then with our department, and then I think it was eventually, you guys, I mean, you guys recommended it to Town Meeting in favor of. And that was, yeah, that was back in 2022.
2021.
2021, sorry. 2021.
So three years ago.
Yes.
Attorney Hung, can I?
Of course.
Can you tell... Any idea, these are condos, any idea roughly what they're going to sell for?
It will be a form of condominium ownership, and I think currently the purchasers will be...
Million range.
Million range. Million range. One million range.
Around one million?
Yes.
I'm just thinking back to when we approved Holly Glenn, and we had some off-site mitigation that was offered and negotiated with the owner there, and they, you know, when we asked them, those condos were, according to... What was his name? Jeff Ruder was his name, the fellow that was handling it for the owner, were going to sell for $450,000. Well, they ended up, I think the last one sold for very close to a million dollars, and we might have asked for additional. I'm trying to figure out, the $50,000 was negotiated in 2021, and we're in 2024, you're probably not going to sell until, what, 2026, maybe? By the time you get in the ground built and whatever, is there a way that we can increase the $50,000 based on the fact that these units will sell for more than was anticipated in 2021? I know you already worked the $50,000 into your budget, and I can understand that, but you worked it into your budget based on around a million dollars. I mean, if they were to sell for a million and a half dollars apiece or something, I would think that the Planning Board had been a little remiss in not getting a little bit more money, especially since it's for affordable housing. Can you help me there? Do you...
I mean, again, this was all negotiated back in 2021, when it went before Town Meeting. It went through all of the various boards. It's been negotiated, it's been factored into their budget as part of the purchase price with Norbloom, and so that's all kind of implemented, those, that money is implemented in and factored into the PNS.
But those PNSs are not... Oh, the PNS for the whole project from Norbloom?
Correct.
I'm talking about the individual PNSs for the nine units. Maybe...
Yeah, I mean, I just think that it just, you know, because it was something that was approved at Town Meeting, I just think it sends like a wrong message to the development community, that this was something that was approved at Town Meeting, and then it's changed, you know? It's renegotiated, so to speak.
I think, Ernie, can I interject as well? I think what you're really saying, though, is that he's not saying that he wants to change it based on what you've done your numbers for. He's basically saying that if it ends up, that the sales price way exceeds the numbers that they figured into their budget, can there be a sliding, a little more of a sliding scale on that contribution, you know?
I mean, how would... I don't know how...
In other words, it doesn't change as long as your budget, you know, you're basically saying around a million dollars, but let's say in two years from now, they end up going for a million, you know? And the profit margin is a lot higher than, you know, is there some way to build that into it, something?
Yeah, if I may, Ben Finnegan, FK Partners, Finnegan Development, I appreciate the question, Mr. Cavino. And I understand it. What I will say is the two of the nine units, keep in mind, are in the restored Kent Cottage. That Kent Cottage restoration is a big expensive project, significantly more than new construction to restore that. So two of the nine are in that restored unit, so I just ask you to keep that in mind. And as well as with regard to the timeframe, construction costs since 2021 regarding that restoration have also significantly increased. So those are just two points that I'll mention there, aside from what Ms. Hung mentioned regarding the structure of the PNS with Norbloom.
Again, not to beat a dead horse, but we're basically saying the numbers work at a million, and if you end up having it a million five, that's all windfall above and beyond your profit margins. I'm not advocating or not advocating. What I'm just saying is that is the way to look at it. It really doesn't matter. You did the numbers based on the $50,000, and it makes a lot of sense. That's including restoring the old building, that's including everything with Norbloom, that's including everything you've done. I'm sure you've done the projections, and the numbers work at a million, if that's what you're saying. So if it happens to be a million three, then, you know, times what? How many units? Nine units, right? So, you know, another 300,000 times nine, that's substantial amount of, you know? And I'm sure he's not talking about all, he's talking about a small sliding scale somewhere in there, but again, I don't...
Yeah, I'm not sure how we'd do that, right? Let's think about that as we go along.
Okay, sure, sure.
A good point. Thank you. X-Men Chair, Member Leroux.
Thank you, Chair Gaffney. I don't have anything additional to add. I would concur with Ernie. I think it would be great if we could get something additional, because the housing need crisis right now is so severe, and it's difficult for us to do much with $50,000, given the great need. But I do also understand your position, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Member Vice Chair Sutherland, do you have anything?
Thank you. I... The one thing I noticed is I was, I drove by there yesterday on the way to something, as well as back here today, and the one thing I guess I didn't quite take note of before was kind of how close to the road this construction will be, and I'm very excited to see this green space, and, you know, hoping that there are people taking part in the green space and being around there, but also being so close to the road. Are you considering some safety elements kind of right along that road to help people feel safe when they're out there? Because cars are, it's a turn, as well as cars are zooming by. I just wanted to kind of hear what your consideration for some additional safety measures.
Yeah, and that's a good point. We have discussed that. We have, right now, landscaping that's along that front, but we would be willing to put up, and we think that it would be a benefit to have a low retaining wall along the front just as a safeguard, so that the people that are enjoying the courtyard don't feel right up against that right away with cars passing by. So thank you for bringing that, but that has been something that we've been discussing as well.
Okay. Yeah, I think it would be great to see some sort of maybe stone retaining wall.
Like a stone wall.
Yeah, like a lower stone wall, so that it doesn't block the actual view of the Kent Cottage, but yes.
Okay, great.
Great. I think that was my main question. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Pembah.
Just actually, you guys said you got approvals, all approvals are done from Conservation, no?
Correct.
Anything that is, you know, interesting in relation to the approvals, that any replication of wetlands or anything that's...
So after the sidewalk, through, through Mr. Chair, after the sidewalk, there were three flags that were slightly moved in. The most, I think, was five feet, which adjusted the buffer a little, but nothing that impacted the development, it just some grading tweaks, and an addition of four additional landscape trees, because there are four additional trees that were on the line, which will be shown in the revised plans that we submit, both to Planning and Conservation as one whole revision date. So the landscape plan will be updated, and then the rest of the package will be updated because of that buffer. And I think that was all that came up at Conservation.
Okay, so on that line is my next question. So the tree, the vegetation that's going up along the streetscape, is that, is there going to be, you know, trees that are going to grow to some size in there?
The ones on the outer outsides are, we tried to keep not large trees in the middle, so that way Kent Cottage could still be visible from the street. We didn't want a very large tree blocking that view of Kent Cottage. So the ones on the outside, on either side of the green space, would be larger trees. And then there's going to be four additional trees that have been placed, just aren't shown on this plan. Those are being updated with the landscape architect.
Okay. Do you have any kind of lighting plan that's going along there?
There is a lighting plan that was submitted along, in the submission package. I don't know if you have it handy to pull up.
All right, good. If you give me one moment, I can get...
But there are streetlights, there's lights above the garage door and next to the front entrances, and then there's also bollard lighting throughout the green space along the walkways.
Okay. All right, I'm actually, I'm excited, I can't, I mean, it's...
It's been a long time.
I'm excited to get the Kent Cottage back into...
No, we're excited about this project as well.
Yeah, yeah. It's a gem to have, and now to, you know, to be able to get it restored and used again is phenomenal, so I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. Pembah. Member Anatola?
Yes, I was gonna say, I see that you're gonna put the stop sign the police department had requested, and I think that was a good move to have the stop with the exit with the parking lot there. I think it's gonna be easier to get in there, so...
Yep, and then it's gonna be a right turn out only.
Right turn out.
Yeah, I was...
That's a good idea.
Yep.
Great idea.
Real good idea.
Anything else, Member Anatola?
Nope.
Anything else from members? We'll start to the left, and then we'll go right. You're good?
Thank you. You mentioned lighted bollards along the walkways. Will they go along the walkways that are closest to the street as a protective barrier for people who may be walking there? Because those two walkways that are closest to the street are pretty close.
I believe, I believe they're about 15 to 20 feet back, I believe, but there's, so there's street lighting, there's existing street lighting already on metal sacks. That lighting will remain, so it'll be well lit. And then, again, if, were you able to pull up the lighting?
It's not lighting so much that I was looking for. You'd said lighted bollards. It was really the word bollards that I was interested in.
They're not protective bollards. They're not, so these bollards are just electrical, they're not concrete, they're not, like, so the wall, in this case, would be...
Will the wall extend in front of the walkways?
We can.
Because I just think there should be something to protect people that are walking along those walkways that are so close to the street. You can extend the wall, or you could come up with some other way to protect them. Extending the wall would be very attractive.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Member Leroux. The only comment I had was, and then maybe this questions to staff with regard to a crosswalk that's, it's across the street. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, I'd be glad to pull it up, just for, just to clarify this. So I'm able to share my screen that, just to orient you, that Kent Cottage across the street, the proposed exit is going to be, and the walkway across Middle Secks Turnpike exit is going to be, and the walkway across Middlesex Turnpike is going to be out over here as you go across the existing median. And then it's just this over here across the entrance to now Blue Sky Drive, that at one point this was painted as a sidewalk, or as a crosswalk. The paint has disappeared. And as part of this approval, we're, we're asking the applicant to be able to repaint this so that if somebody who is walking out of the site wants to go, it'll be south down, down Middlesex Turnpike, they're able to cross this area in a crosswalk rather than unpainted.
That's a good idea.
So that is, that's all we're, we're looking forward to that.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Can I just add something?
Yes, Mr. Chair, please.
So that painting of the strike board is actually an obligation of Norblum's through part of a prior permit that they have received. So we've reached out to them and have coordinated, coordinated with Norblum. It's part of their schedule that they'll be doing in the spring. I think as part of the road construction when they were, it got paved over and so that the lines went away. But it's on their schedule for the spring and so it will be, it'll be painted then. But we're fine with including that as a condition in our permit.
And when you say spring, do you mean 2024 or 2025?
I think coming, coming, or summer, early summer.
Oh, okay.
Soon.
Okay, great. Awesome.
Great. So just asking the board before we open up to the public, with regard to the affordable housing payment, you know, is there, is there any way, maybe to staff, is there any way to condition it to say if the average price, you know, is greater than a certain percentage of what they dictated, then this is sliding scale or something with regard to potentially providing additional affordable housing? Let's see, I, I don't know if we've ever done this before, so.
Yeah, it would, it, it might be a little bit tricky.
How about if we just got a voluntary commitment from the owner that says if any of the condos sell for 1.3 million or more, that they contribute an extra $3,000 per. I mean, that's not a lot of money and that's, it's more token than anything else. I mean, you can't, you can't do a hell of a lot with 50,000. You can't do a heck of a lot with 100,000 these days. So I mean, and I understand where they're coming from too. It's in their budget. I mean, if circumstances go the other way, would we tell them?
Right.
That they only have to contribute 30, 30,000? No. So, no, I, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm just, you know, if I put myself in their position, I'm going, so they want to break the deal they already made? Okay.
The town, the town.
That's how we see it. It's like honestly.
No, I understand, I understand.
For town meeting, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Member Larue, any comment?
I don't think 3,000 per unit really does anything. I was gonna, going to suggest if the average price of the units exceeds 1.3 million, or we can pick a number, that contribution gets bumped up to 100,000. But I also understand Attorney Hung's point that this was negotiated and I don't want to send a, a message that we're going to continue to renegotiate some things.
Yeah.
So I just, I don't, I'm not sure that $3,000 per unit.
Makes a difference.
Really gives us anything to work with. No offense.
Yeah, no, no, I, I understand. And I'm, in, in thinking about it in retrospect, would we give their money back if the sales price went down?
I'm pretty sure we wouldn't.
No.
So, I forget I said anything.
Any other members comment on that? Comfortable with?
No, I was thinking the same thought. If it had gone down, would you, it could just happen to go up. That's the way it is with the deal.
Member Pembah.
My, my honest thoughts are I'm just happy to see the Kent House being restored. That's my, I think we, that's a win for us, as far as I'm concerned now.
Okay, thank you. So what we'll do is we'll open up to the public. Do you have any members of the public who wish to speak on this application?
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Okay. Is there a motion?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the request of FK Partners Burlington LLC of two special permits pursuant to Section 12.1.5 PD Special Parent Requirements of the Zoning Bylaw and Section 1.1.1 Residential of the Network Drive at Northwest Park Plan Development District zoning provisions to permit the development of a nine-unit residential project for property located within the network drive at Northwest Park Plan Development PD District and Aquifer District located at 225 Middlesex Turnpike, subject to the terms and conditions in Exhibit A as amended.
Second.
Okay, so we approach to close the public hearing. Do we do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you table this?
Table that and let's, let's take a motion to, to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's seven zero, close. And so there was a motion?
Six zero.
Yeah, six zero. Six zero, close?
Yes.
Right, because Brenda's not here. Thank you. All right, the motion was made. Was there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's another six zero. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I would just like to add that we've been, I've been talking to the applicant and he was saying or had the idea that once the Kent Cottage has been developed, to maybe do an open house for the town members to come in, the historical commission to actually see, you know, how the Kent Cottage was restored. So we'll welcome that.
Thank you.
As it's developed.
That'd be nice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to delivering a quality product.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that was fantastic. Maybe just a side note, you know, there was, there was comments from the Conservation Commission. We, what we, what we used to do before COVID was actually have comments in from departments and they were actually read and the details with that. Maybe we can start doing that again, only if it's something beyond the boilerplate.
Yes, yes. I, I, so.
Good idea.
Yes, we used to do that. In this, in this, just for the record, in this instance, for this project, they're all standard. There's nothing.
Okay, thank you.
They're all standard conditions. Great.
Okay, thank you. So we have Item 8A. Item 8A is a public hearing. It's an application for an approval of site plan, 155 Middlesex Turnpike. The 155 Middlesex Turnpike LLC is the applicant. Who do we have today?
Good evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Christine Hung, Reema Bronstein, attorney for the applicant. With me tonight, we have our project team and I will introduce you to them. Coming up to the seat right to the right of me is Michael Kern, the project architect from Linear Development. Next to Michael, I have Trina Murphy, who is the representative from the applicant. And Brian Gudrow are, are site civil engineer from Hancock Associates, also part of the project team, but who is not with us tonight is Rich Kirby. He's our wetland scientist and has been dealing with the Conservation Commission.
Okay, great. Thank you. Please describe what, what you're up to here on 155 Middlesex Turnpike?
Yes, and I have one person else to introduce, Kim Hazavarti, and our traffic engineer from TEP LLC. He's sitting in the first row right there. So we are before you tonight with the property located at 155 Middlesex Turnpike. It's a two-story building that was originally constructed in the late 1960s. And since that time, there's been limited improvements to the property and it's not really responding to the market. The applicant purchased the building in November of 2023 and is using the portion of a building, one of the floors, as their corporate headquarters. And they're looking to make a substantial investment in the property by adding three stories to the existing two-story building. It is located, the property's about 1.1 acres. It's in the industrial IG zoning district. It's also located in the Aquifer Protection as well as the Flood Plain District. It abuts, Caleb, can you just advance to the next slide?
Yep.
It abuts RO land. So this is an aerial view of the property. You can see the 155 Middlesex Turnpike kind of in the center of the, of the page. Just north of it is the town maintenance building. And then to the right is the water treatment facility. And those sandwich the RO district conservation area, really. It's just very wet. There's river buffers. It's jurisdictional resource areas. Across this, you have Middlesex Turnpike that bifurcates this, this view as, and then you have the Northwest Park, Third Ave, Lifetime, Lifetime Living across the street. This is just showing the various zoning districts. So the purple is IG. We, we are located there. Thank you, Caleb. And then surrounding us is all RO, which actually impacts our ability to, to develop because it's abutting in RO district. We were before the ZVA getting a height variance and an FAR variance because the, because of the resource area constraining it as well as the, abutting the RO constrains our site development. The next slide shows a current view of the site. So as you're coming down Middlesex Turnpike, it's, you go down the hill and the building actually sits a little bit, like one floor below grade, so it's kind of sunken down. But this is a current view of the building. The next slide shows some of the buffer areas, the flood zone, you have the 20% depth of lot because it abuts an RO zone. So really, the only way that you can develop the property is to go up. And that is what we are doing, going up three stories. You can't really go out because the site is small and because parking as well. This just lays out our approval process so far. So on April 2nd, we were before the zoning board of appeals. They granted our variance for height and FAR. We had the DCM last week. And then we've been before the conservation for our notice of intent. And the notes say that the Conservation Commission reviewed and commented on the proposed plans. They are generally supportive. They did a site walk to understand the basin. There is a basin in front of the site that is maintained by, by the town. So there was a site walk that was done just this week to, to take a look at that basin. And then we are here before you tonight. And then we've continued conservation to, to the next meeting. So I'm going to turn it over right now to Michael Kern, who is going to talk about some of the architectural renderings as well as some of the sustainable features that this building will provide.
Thank you, Christine. Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for your time this evening. My name's Michael Kern. I'm an architect with Linear Development. When the owner of this property approached me to review options, we looked at the existing two-story building, which is currently about 13,000 square feet. It's represented, if you look at those two renderings on the right, by that gray band that, that's it exactly right there. That's about 13,000 square feet on two floors. And as Christine mentioned, there was a desire to add some more space to this site. So we have explored this opportunity, this design of three additional floors. The third and fourth floors are about 6,200 square feet and a little bit smaller fifth floor that is roughly 4,300 square feet with a little bit of a roof deck area. The intent here, if, also on the site plan, that, that's actually a model of the site plan. You can see with the new parking layout that's been proposed, as well as some other features that some of the team members will talk about a little bit later here. But the two renderings basically show you what it would look like daytime and what it would look like nighttime. If we could move forward one slide. So this is a little bit, this is Brian, Civil Engineer's site plan that's been rendered to indicate the first floor plate. We are keeping the existing footprint with the exception of a small increase to the front entry vestibule. That, if you're familiar with the building and maybe saw it on the previous photos, the current vestibule is about a seven foot by seven foot, very unassuming entrance for a front door. So we've taken an opportunity to expand that a little bit and make it two levels in that, that area.
That's the current footprint? You said you're gonna keep it, right?
The current footprint is 6617. And so that's the only expansion. And Brian will talk a little bit more about the impervious components to the, the site itself. But that was the only expansion to the footprint. Everything else was vertical. And then also, yeah, right here on the building elevations, more of what you saw on the first slide, except all four elevation showing the elevated floors with similar materials to the lower floors, except it will be some sort of a panel type product. We're researching different options. We're looking at some items that may be more sustainable in production than others. And then keeping the existing windows on the first and second floor. So those would remain. What you see there is, is existing. The upper floors maintain aluminum storefront type curtain wall systems with some spandrel glass. And then again, on the upper floor, you see there how it stepped back a bit, a little bit of reduction in floor area, but that center staircase that you see in the glass area does go to that level. Give us an opportunity for that tenant or tenants to have some access to some outdoor space on that level. Next slide, please. So these are the individual floor plates. Again, floors one and two are the same match with the exception of that small vestibule expansion. The floor plates represented on this first floor includes an amenity space. Exactly where this is located, maybe on the second floor, maybe on the first floor, but that area is consistent. That area is an amenity space for the tenants only. It is not a separately leased space for like a cafe or anything like that. It's more of a cyber cafe, breakout office type space, conference and a small exercise area. This, this level also includes all of the infrastructural components of the building, the water sprinkler, electrical rooms, et cetera. And then the upper floor plates are roughly 6,200 square feet. And depending on how the leasing efforts go with the owner, those floor plates could include two tenants, four tenants, something like that, depending on how they're best divided. But the, the core spaces would remain consistent through. We would have bathroom core, stair cores, front and back. And then the existing two-stop elevator would need to be expanded, obviously, to the fifth floor. Next slide, please. Okay, so early on, we started talking about how we could, you know, potentially make this building a LEED certifiable design. Maybe not going through the mechanics of the actual LEED certification, but meeting the points and allocated systems of the LEED certified structure. And we have been doing a lot of research on window systems to minimize the solar heat gain. And we think we have a couple of great opportunities there with some nice systems for that. And as you saw there, there was a fair amount of glass, so we want to be, we want to be cognizant of that. The other thing that I mentioned briefly during the elevation discussion was sustainable building materials. Depending on the type of building, panels that we use, we will be very interested in looking at what is maybe recycled metals or resins or different types of products that can be, can be identified as a sustainable product. The mechanical systems will be state of the art in this facility. So it'll be a computerized system monitoring what is the environment inside. That coupled with the insulation envelope and, and those systems, we feel very confident that we're going to have a very fuel-efficient mechanical system. And then also the plumbing fixtures will be low flow. So we understand that, you know, water usage is obviously not just in Burlington, but everywhere an issue. So with those plumbing fixtures will be engineered to reduce flows. Additionally, we'll have charging stations on site for electric vehicles and as well as bike racks should there be any tenants that wish to bike to work. The building structure is being designed for the collateral loading of solar panels with conduits to allow for a solar roof system. And then at that upper floor, that fourth floor roof slash fifth floor access deck, we are exploring some green roofing systems. So maybe some areas where you could go out and have lunch with a little bit of a deck area, but then also some of those type of component tray systems that would have plantings in them as well. And then, as I mentioned, we would be reusing as many of the building materials as possible. So we think we've got a nice, nice design planned here. We're making the most of what we have. It's going to be structural, you know, engineering will be an important component of this, redoing some of the footings and adding to the structural system. But we, we have the right team for it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we're gonna pass it on to the engineer. We still have.
Okay, keep it going. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. For the record, Brian Gudrow with Hancock Associates, so other civil engineers on this project. When we looked at this site from an engineering perspective, we wanted the site to reflect the, the beauty that the architect is putting into the building. So we're looking at upgrading where we can for infrastructure, for stormwater management, and also reduce kind of the pervy, the impervious that we have out there. So we have a little bit of a disorganized parking lot. And we went through it with just a very fine-toothed comb to understand where inefficiencies were, where we could eliminate pavement, how we could just make the site seem to, to work a little bit better. So as a part of that, the entire parking lot's going to be milled and overlaid. So new striping to reflect the kind of flow change that we have there. Cash basins will be upgraded with hoods. Conservation had a very specific interest in kind of the stormwater management that was on site. As, as Christine spoke earlier, the town actually owns an easement for the basin that's at the front of the site. It takes a significant portion of runoff from Middlesex Turnpike. So there's limited opportunity in there. So we looked, you know, deeper into the site. What, what can we do to the cash basins? What can we do to, to reduce flows to that basin? And then a critical component to that is, is an operation and maintenance plan. So D and D, or excuse me, 155 Middlesex LLC cleaned all the cash basins this week to understand what's going on with them and just verify some depth. Those were things that, that. Those were things that Conservation, again, was, was interested in. If we could flip to the next slide. So this is our layout plan. As you, as you enter the site, there's a central catch basin, and then further back towards the, the eastern portion of the top of the page, there's a second catch basin. Those basically collect all the stormwater. Roof drains are tied into those, which then go into the detention basin up front. So our, our general scheme of, of looking at pavement for the inefficiencies, we shifted the dumpster to the center of the aisle as you drive in to make refuse and recycling pickup easier. There was opportunity to kind of clip the pavement in that area and introduce some green space. All of the walkways that are surrounding the building are going to, which are concrete right now, will be ripped out, and pervious walkways will be put in, excuse me, on the kind of western or northern portion of the site, off pavement, left-hand side of the page. That's where the wetlands reside. The wetland line is actually off property, but is basically right at the line, so that's where the buffer projects. Right now, there's a patio and kind of a sitting area, rather large concrete pad, that's being proposed to be removed. And then Trina will get into kind of our conservation planting plan. So what is currently manicured lawn in that area, we're gonna be naturalizing and introducing a significant number of native plantings in that area. So again, our, our key goal here is to, to introduce pervious surfaces, reduce pavement as much as possible, increase stormwater treatment on-site, and then introduce an, an operation and maintenance plan to make sure that everything is functioning properly and in perpetuity. And with that, I'll turn it over to Trina.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, members of the board. I'm Trina Murphy with 155 Middlesex. Also, as Brian gently mentioned, DND Homes. To tell you a little bit about us, we are a real estate, residential and commercial real estate developer and builder. We had our start in Lexington, but as of 2020, Burlington has been our home. We're very happy to be here, and since the time we took up residence in Burlington, we've been searching for a permanent home for ourselves. As much as we have a U.S. presence, we also have an international office in Cypress. So we have two, we have dual headquarters. Here in Burlington, we, you know, we've been looking for, like I said, a property for a long time. We had another property on Middlesex Turnpike under agreement, and our business was growing so fast, we had many people hanging out at a conference table. So we needed to make an alternate decision because that site required a longer work, a longer timeline for turning it around. So we found 155 Middlesex by happy accident. It's a beautiful site. It's a beautiful section of Middlesex Turnpike. We're super thrilled to have it be our home. I'll talk a little bit more when we jump back into it. Let me just jump into the conservation plan, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about us a little later in the presentation. So as Brian said, on the side of the, the property, it abouts the conservation area. So Christine mentioned that we had already gone to Conservation Commission. The Eileen and John came out along with the Conservation Commission ahead of the meeting to tour the site. I walked through the property with them, explained all of the various segments of our property. They were very curious to know about the town easement for stormwater at the front of the building. We went to Conservation Commission, and in general, they're very happy with our, our plan and our, our approach to our project. I mean, the plan in itself, it's, you know, there's, there's minimal disturbance to the site. We're only looking to improve the site. We don't really find that anything that we're doing is a detriment. But they were very curious to know about the stormwater in the front, so we scheduled a meeting with the town engineer. So Tom and Gage from Engineering came out, along with Eileen and John, and Caleb also joined us. So we had a conversation about the stormwater system. They understood it a lot better. Maintenance of that stormwater system is the responsibility of the town. And as they explained in that meeting, they're very happy with the outcome, and, you know, we anticipate an approval at our upcoming meeting on the ninth. So as part of our approach with conservation, you know, beyond the permeable areas that were changing on the property, we had proposed in this area a substantial mitigation planting plan. So in this planting plan, this is over 6,000 square feet of area. So as Brian explained, we're removing, you know, a impervious patio. We're eliminating all of the lawn area. We are planting 12 trees and 47 additional plant species, all native species to this area, to help protect those wetland areas from our parking area. So we hope that, you know, they were very pleased with this. They found that this was a, a super positive addition to the application. And, you know, from here, we'll, we'll take it to a next step and talk about traffic highlights before I come back to you a little later. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening. I'm Kim Hazabardian, Traffic Engineer with TEP LLC. 155 Middlesex LLC retained TEP LLC to conduct a traffic assessment, which we did. And one of the elements of the traffic assessment was a site distance analysis at the, the existing driveway location, which will remain the same. And if you go one slide forward to Table 1, it shows that we have at least 500 feet of site distance, and that provides for appropriate speeds on Middlesex Turnpike. Going back to the previous slide, the project is anticipated to have no significant impact on area traffic operations, and let me explain how we got there. If you go forward two slides, we have a trip generation table, Table 2. And we relied on the Institute of Transportation Engineers' professional standard methodology to generate trips for the site. The first line shows the existing trips with the existing square footage of 12,987 square feet. The second line shows a calculated trip generation for the proposed square footage of 29,670. And the last line shows the differences. And for both the AM and PM peak hours, we see an increase of 30 vehicle trips. Now, a professional guideline on when to do more analysis is 100 vehicle trips in or out, and 30 is well under that. Putting it into another form of perspective, 30 vehicle trips total of in and out, lefts and rights in, lefts and rights out, works out to an average of less than 10 trips per movement in and out of the site. And when you compare that to the thousands of vehicles during the peak hours on Middlesex Turnpike, it's not gonna create a noticeable difference. We looked at crash history for the driveway intersection with Middlesex Turnpike. We looked at the five most recent finalized years from MassVOT's data, 2016 through 2020, and we shot, we found no crashes. Finally, we will install a stop sign at the property exit prior to completion of construction per the request of Burlington Police.
Back to Trina. Okay, so, good evening again. Trina Murphy with 155 Middlesex LLC and DND Homes. So, you know, as I was explaining, you know, we, we determined that 155 Middlesex was going to be our home, and looking at the property, you know, given that we're, we're in the business, you know, this property is an investment for us, but also we are real estate developer and builder, so we do this for a living. You know, we looked at the opportunities to, you know, realize the value of the property for, for us and for the town. And so in looking at the property, and one thing that I'll say, we took ownership of the building in November. We moved in in early February. Prior to our ownership, the former owner was kind enough to allow us to begin marketing the property for rent. We do occupy the entire second floor, so the first floor is currently for rent. And we have yet to have a tenant come in, so that it speaks to the considerable issues that we have with the site. So as part of our expansion plan, you know, not only bringing in, you know, the, the tenants, the revenue to help sort of support the building, you know, this amenity space that we're talking about is important. You know, we thought about the amenity space, and, you know, we're not big enough to have a café. We're not big enough to have a lot of the amenities that some of these larger buildings have. But the cyber café approach that we, that we're implementing here, you know, we really think about the way that people operate with their, their positions these days, their hybrid work models, their work at home. You know, there's no, there's no more of that nine-to-five, sit at your desk. So people look for an escape even from their desk when they are on-site. So creating these private sort of, you know, collaborative social environments where they can still either independently work or, or kind of be in a social, social space with an unmanned coffee bar, a, you know, a modest fitness center. Is it a place to escape if you need a moment to sort of decompress, right? And also, we're looking at putting in a boardroom, a larger conference space, so that as tenants that need to be on-site, you know, because office space, there's no such thing as a large office space anymore. Tenants that need to be on-site, they can maximize the use of their suites by allowing, you know, that, that, that large boardroom to be sort of a joint resource to be used by all of the building. So we really tried to think about how to develop this space smartly. We are intending to, like I said, we're the owner of the building, and we're intending to continue operating our business out of here. So this is an important site for us, more than any other development that we have. So, you know, as we were thinking about this, we talked to economic development and talking to planning. We've been talking with Conservation. We've been working with the various departments in Burlington who have been really a tremendous support to us. So we're a little newer to working in Burlington, but I, I cannot tell you the amount of support that we've received and how much we've appreciated it. You know, even after a DCM meeting, the Health Department reached out right away, and not to jump on me about something, but to make me, to offer their support and to understand this amenity space and the resources that we are trying to provide. So, you know, we're very thankful for that. But, you know, as we continued on the site, you know, one thing that we heard from planning and from economic development is this pedestrian access. So we're gonna jump through some site, some images, and I want to explain to you a little bit more, help you familiarize yourself with our site and kind of how we fit contextually with Third Ave. So in this first, in this first picture, can we jump to the first picture, Caleb? Okay. So in this first picture, so the, the question of a sidewalk came up. And so, you know, as it was explained, you know, our front yard is essentially a detention basin. So the stormwater from Middlesex Turnpike runs off of the street into this basin and then pushes back out to the town system. And so for that reason, our basin, we can't really play with it. And so you can see here along the street, we have our telephone poles, and then we have a large drop into the basin. So a sidewalk isn't really feasible here without tremendous cost, safety guard rails, retaining walls and such. Something to note, and we'll see this as, in the pictures as we go forward, when we, when we start traveling away from Third Ave down Middlesex Turnpike, right after us is the conservation area. So that conservation area is followed by, I believe it's the Vine Brook Water Treatment Facility. And then the next stop is the intersection, which is Terrace Hall Ave. And at Terrace Hall Ave, there's a major intersection with electric, electric supply center, and there are major crosswalks right there. So anyone coming up from that area would utilize those crosswalks and go up Middlesex Turnpike on the other side to get access to Third Ave. So what I'm trying to express is that we really tried to look at this, to think about pedestrian access beyond our property, kind of all around and how it can work. So something about us is that we do a lot of work in urban areas, Alston, Brighton, Brookline, like, uh, Kong, uh, excuse me, Cambridge? Excuse me, one second. So pedestrian access, bicycle access, it's a huge part of what we do, so we have a lot of focus on it. We understand it. So you guys have been extremely forward thinking about it. You know, I'm someone who's grown up in this area my whole life, so the Middlesex Turnpike is how I, I explain everything. You know where the Middlesex Turnpike is? From there, you go here. So it's incredible to see the transformation, and we're excited to be a part of it. So Caleb, if we can go to the next slide? And so this here, I know it may be a little hard to see from a distance, but this kind of gives you a sense of the pitch of the drop into the basin and kind of what that basin looks like in the front. On the very far left of the picture is where you can see, forgive me, I don't know the technical term of the, the concrete, what's it called?
The storm scepter?
Thank you. The storm scepter. That's where the water runs off of Middlesex Turnpike in, into the basin before it pushes back out on the other side. Caleb, go jump to the next slide. So this here is the view as you're looking toward the conservation area. So you can see the conservation area goes all the way up to the Turnpike, including the water, so there really isn't an opportunity to develop a sidewalk. Again, as you lead past the water treatment plant into Terrace Hall Avenue. Next slide. This here is the view from 155 Middlesex, and the building that you see on your left there, that's 149 Middlesex. And the kind of taller buildings that you see in the back right, that is Third Avenue. So we have a beautiful view of Third Ave, which we love. So this kind of gives you a sense of the perspective, you know, thinking about a sidewalk or pathway from our building leading up to Third Avenue. So we tried to look at this, look at where 149 is, you know, the telephone poles and other things situated on the site, and where sort of a transition from our property to their property could happen as they, in the future, they may have a sidewalk. Going to the next slide. So these are my beautiful yellow arrows that kind of give you a sense of what we're thinking. So, you know, because the sidewalk is not feasible, you know, we are thinking about pedestrian access from our building because the, the Third Avenue amenity, that's an amenity for us. It's a selling feature for our tenants and the people that we have. So we think it's a great thing. So we're really thinking about, you know, how can we gain access for the people from our building? And so this is where we're thinking, we can run the walkway, the existing walkway that goes from the parking lot across the front and carry it around and loop it up, and then reconnect it to a future sidewalk at 149. If we can go to the next slide? So I wanted to show you this picture because this is the existing concrete walkway that we have, that goes from the parking lot over to the front door. And because the screen is so big, it, it's not as dramatic as it really is, but that's a six-foot wide walkway. It's a very wide walkway. And one thing that you've probably noticed when talking about this project is that we don't have a lot of green space on our site. So we're a lot of asphalt, we're a lot of, you know, permeable paper. I mean, it's great that they're permeable and the water can infiltrate, but, you know, we need green space. And so for that reason, you know, we are not proposing a six-foot wide walkway going the other way, and our material selection is purposeful, and I'll get into that. But I wanted to show you how dramatic and how wide a six-foot wide walkway is. I'm sure you didn't walk, watched me walk up to the podium, to the table here, but this walkway is almost a foot taller than I am. If we can go to the next slide? Okay. So in this slide, what I wanted you to see, and it's a little hard to see, you know, we have a couple of manhole covers, we have an electrical handhole there in the background. And the other thing that's a little hard to see are all of the roots for that tree that's right there to the right. So they're all kind of right at the surface. So if we were to put in a permeable walkway, we would have to chop those, and it's going to detrimentally harm the tree. So what we're proposing is a stone dust walkway. So it's something that is substantial and lasting. We're proposing five feet presently to wrap from the front entrance around all of these various features that we have to be careful of and bring it all the way out to that sidewalk area. So we wanted you to see the constraints that we have and how we're really trying to find a way to make this work in a very positive way. As much as it's a stone dust walkway, it's still going to be treated as a walkway on our property, you know, throughout the four seasons. If you can go to the next slide? So this just shows you, I've highlighted, this is the stormwater easement for the town of Burlington. So this is the entirety of the area that we have to maintain pretty much as it is, and you'll see our stone dust pathway as it crosses through there. So we're also thinking about future maintenance, should they need to tear it apart and redevelop anything. This here is the actual pedestrian access proposal that we have. So you'll see that is a five-foot wide pathway as opposed to the six-foot that's on the other side. And we will curve it, we need to curve it around the, the various constraints that we have on the site, and we want to lead it right up to where we believe that future sidewalk would be for 149. So we hope that you'll see that we put some considerable effort into finding a way to gain pedestrian access from our site over to Third Avenue. Again, it's, you know, it's, it's a really great amenity for our tenants. So again, these are just some architectural renderings to show you, you know, just, just kind of refresh you on what we're, what it is that we're trying to do. And for all of the changes that we've made, we feel that they're all really wholly positive, and we hope that they're a benefit to the town, and, you know, you see them as a benefit to the town, as we see them as a benefit to ourselves and our tenants. This is, you know, the renovation costs that we're looking at are over $4.2 million, so this is a significant investment for us. But we do see Burlington as, as our home now and for the future. This here, future development on Middlesex. This is the very last slide, Caleb. So what we did is we, we also like to think about the future, not just tomorrow, but 10 years from now, 20 years from now, what things can look like. So our building, as it exists, so the proposed height, so this is the proposed height with the new building at 66 feet, is it?
Uh huh.
So at 66 feet. And we looked at the zoning allowances for the buildings adjacent to us so that we could see what the future could be. So if someone decides to redevelop 149, 151, I mean, 141, 149, I believe 141 is in, in the MBTA, is that right, Christine?
Yeah, it's part of the overlay.
So that could be even, even more so. We wanted to make sure that we still had a hope and prayer of fitting in and, and being a, you know, substantial contributor to Burlington. So we just wanted you to see what the snapshot could look like as well. So this is the completion of our presentation. We're more than happy to entertain any questions, and we hope that you'll, you'll see this as a positive contribution. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Trina. I just want to make a general comment before I hand it over to staff and to the board. I, I thought I, I thought this was a very well-done presentation with regard to content and timing and summarization in that you showed us what you had as your constraints, your countermeasures and your solutions. And I would, I would encourage maybe staff, as we have folks coming in for similar projects, to use this as a template. That's just my general thought. So thank you for that and thanks to the team.
Amazing team here with me.
And I think just even the architectural traffic, I think was very concise as well in, in the, in the site plan. So thanks to all. So I'm gonna turn it over to staff. Staff, have any comments for us before I turn it over to the board?
At this point, we're, you know, it's our recommending, we're just opening this. Concom still needs to weigh in. You know, I think that, you know, just reiterating and I, I know they, they spoke a bit about it, but the, kind of the, the vision plan for Mulholland Middlesex Turnpike is to really support alternative modes of transportation, be that walking, biking, kind of not keep it as a, an auto-oriented area and encourage different ways of getting around. So I just kind of, you know, wanted to reiterate that to you guys as we move on.
Thank you. Thank you, Liz. I'm gonna start over to the left with Tonyanne, if you wouldn't mind.
Hi. I just wanted to ask you, when you said you were gonna lease the first floor, are they gonna have access to go to the top floor to use that outside area?
So currently, as we have the building designed, the, the roof access is eligible for the tenants that are on the fifth floor.
Okay.
And the amenity space, as was mentioned, depending on our, our tenancy and people that come in, it, it may exist on the first floor, second floor, and it may ultimately end up on the fifth floor. So, it is not currently planned, um, to answer your question.
Okay. It's a nice space, that's why.
It is.
It was really nice looking.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to ask one other question, in the parking lot, and you said you're gonna have charging stations, are they gonna be accessible to the handicap people as well?
They will.
Okay.
Thank you, Member Nataula, a member of Pemba.
So, the, uh, so you currently have two floors and you're gonna go to five floors. What's the variance? What, what's the, uh?
The variance?
Height variance on?
The, it's 66 feet was what was approved at the ZBA.
And it's, and what is it, what's allowed in that?
So what's allowed, because it, it abuts an RO zoning district, the maximum height because it abuts that is 30 feet.
So?
Where, even though it's in the IG, where IG you can go up to 80 feet and that was what was shown on the last slide, you can go up to 80 feet, but because it abuts an RO, it's limited in height to 30 feet. Because of, you know, you don't want a big towering commercial structure over a residential house. But because of this, where the RO location is and because it's wetlands and, you know, jurisdictional river, you know, really, realistically, no house will be built on, on that RO land.
Right.
So where it's undeveloped, the land next door to us, that's why the zoning Board of Appeals.
So you're saying it's all basically wetlands between there and the, and the RO?
I heard media owns the property and they have radio towers throughout the water in that space.
Yes. So the, so the, it abuts, so the RO that it abuts, is that the Cranberry Estates?
It's the Great Meadow.
It's the Great Meadow, it's the swamp.
Yeah, it's where the towers are, Joe.
Right, but what's, what, where's the RO, where's the?
There is none.
That is the RO.
You can see on the screen here.
So there's no, there's no houses in there?
No, you can see on the screen here.
It's all wetlands and riverfront.
That it looks like, based off of this map, that the closest is gonna be on Woodside Lane.
Right.
On, on the other side.
That's what Bob did. But it's, it's quite a, quite a, quite a throw.
Christine, I believe that, that Wetlands lot is what, 9.8 acres next to us?
Yeah.
Yep, so on the other?
A pretty significant wetland parcel.
I think it's even bigger, I think it's like 25 acres.
So what, so what's directly across the street, is that the lifetime, what's, what's directly across Middlesex?
Directly across is one of the Norblum sites, it's, uh, so lifetime living is just a little bit down.
It's about 50 feet past us.
Yeah.
So it's a little bit further north.
So, I mean, I can.
A little bit further west.
Is it like a foliage building?
It's more just like.
Right, so when I look out my office window, I look, and I'm on the left side of the building, I look out and I diagonally see lifetime residences.
Okay.
So this is, so this is the, the exit, this is 155.
Okay.
Behind us and then.
So what's that directly across?
Directly across, this looks like 154, 164, Middlesex Turnpike, which looks to be office space.
And that's lifetime residences right there on the right. See the tall building past it?
Yep, so what's this one directly across?
It's, it used to be, so through you, Mr. Chair, it used to be where Mac Designer Hardware was.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
And so that's where they used to be and then they moved to Bedford. But then I think, so the corner of, it's basically pretty close to the corner of Fourth Ave.
So what's the height of that building?
Which building?
The Corbly Building.
Directly across, the closest buildings to you. Which would be that one across the street, I assume, right?
Looks to be a, a two-story.
Um, I can look it up.
Two-story?
It's a two-story building.
That's two and you're gonna be five.
Yeah. And they have, I believe Christine, they do have the potential to go to five on that side because they're IG, right?
They're in the PDD district and I believe they can go up to 80 feet as well. I don't, I, I don't know for certain, but they're a part of the Northwest Park Plan Development District.
80 feet on the street at, at, on the, in the PDD? Ooh, I don't know what's that.
Step back.
That's a step back, right.
That's exactly right, yeah. So, on the street, they wouldn't be anywhere near it, if you, I wouldn't imagine, right?
Right.
But on our side of the street, where 149 is, it's in the IG zone, they could go up to 80 feet. Similarly with the 141, two buildings down, they could go up to 80 feet because it's in the IG zone.
And as shown on the, as shown on that street view and also in this view as well, we're at the bottom of a hill, so the impression of our height is more insignificant than.
So your park, the parking area, what's the, what's the square footage of the parking area?
Have that bright?
The parking is compliant with the parking spaces at the 2.5 per thousand. So the 2.5 per thousand, based upon the square footage of our building, you know, the proposed building, is, I think it's 68 spaces.
Correct, yes.
And then we discount the amenity space because the amenity space is really just for the tenants in the building. So you're not adding more people, it's just, you know, only the tenants of the building can access it.
Yeah.
I guess my, my only thoughts were, given the expansion, that you're gonna be, you're looking at a building that's all more than double the size of what's there now, did you think of any, anything possibility of going, having any underneath spots and reducing some of the, some of the impermeable surface or?
So the, the stormwater system is below the parking area, so that would, that would be a concern, but, but also the, the parking as it exists now is way more than what the building requires. The parking, it actually looks like the building's empty almost every day, so it's, it's a well-underutilized space as it is.
So you're reducing, you're reducing the parking?
We are increasing the parking per requirements from the town, zoning requirements, but as, so for us occupying the entire second floor, I, I would tell you that, you know, we have six cars in the parking lot on a daily basis, so the rest of the lot is entirely vacant. So, you know, we do feel that we have an appropriate number of parking spaces for the increase in tenancy as it stands, especially with us as an occupant because we underutilized the town's requirement.
I'm just trying to, my, my only thoughts are it's a pretty sensitive water area down there, there's a lot of.
I'm so sorry, I couldn't hear.
It's a pretty sensitive water area down there, water resource area and I, I mean, I'm just wondering if there's any way to reduce the parking, create more impermeable, more permeable surface versus impermeable surface, like, 'cause you're increasing the impermeable surface, you know?
We are actually not, we have a net positive reduction by 401.
Well, that's what I just said, and then you guys said, no, you actually, I thought you just said you were increasing it.
Yeah, so not, excuse me, so, not the impervious, impervious number's going down from what exists today. So, actually on sheet one, we have an impervious breakdown. What's allowed, which, which is 60% coverage of the entire lot, is 30,769 square feet. That's what's allowed to pave essentially, well, pave and build. What exists out there today is 26,698 square feet of pavement and building, which equates to like a 52% ratio. And we're reducing that by 400, a little over 400 square feet of impervious, introducing pervious walkways, cutting out pavement where we can.
Eliminating the patio.
Eliminating the patio that's directly adjacent to the wetland area. So we're, we're going down to 26,297 square feet. So yes, we're increasing the number of parking spaces, but we're actually decreasing the amount of pervious surf, impervious surface that's on-site.
Okay. So that, that was where I was getting at when I asked what the square footage of the, of the parking area was, you know, because you, your walkways are all gonna be pervious.
Pervious pavers.
So, so it's, so it's really all about the parking areas and that's why I was saying, I'm wondering if, you know, if you even thought of the, you know, even tossed around the idea of doing some of it underneath, not taking up a whole floor, but doing some underneath parking.
Under the building.
Under the building parking, yeah.
So parking, parking under the building, as, as Mike was talking about, you know, we're trying to preserve as much of the building as we can, so our first and second floors, we're not making substantial changes to it other than facade changes and maybe some interior layout changes. So for us to excavate and cut open the building to try and do this, it would be a substantial cost and it harms our sustainability initiative. And additionally, as you see around the building, we also have easements, so the drainage easement for 149 exists wrapping around our building as well as obviously the easement that's in the front. So we, we've got a number of constraints. You know, I absolutely support what you're trying to say, but we just have a lot, a large number of issues between the stormwater system under the parking lot, these easements that exist and, and our protection of the existing building. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Joe, anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay. Thank you, Member Suttlin.
Uh, thank you. I would also like to just second what Chair Gaffney said, that I'm very impressed by the efficiency y'all had with meeting with the appropriate folks before coming to us and working through a lot of the thinking that you knew we would ask. So, it was excellent to see and I also am very excited to hear about you adding native plants and taking away some of the maintenance that is required to use water for a lawn. So I'm also very happy to hear about that. I am curious about, and I understand your need and desire to reuse as much as you can from the first and second floor, but how, reusing the windows, how much will that go against the eco-friendly or sustainability? Just, I mean, how old are those windows?
Um, I, I don't know how old they are, I know they're still manufactured. They are, I will say, I'm someone who, I think I live in this building more than I do my own home. The windows are in very good shape, they're not.
Okay.
So I can't tell you the age and I apologize for that, but they are in very good shape. So, I, I don't, I don't feel like their age is, is a deterrent, but I can't tell you what their rating is.
Yeah, we could always look at some sort of a topical solution to reduce the solar heat gain, whether via some sort of an applied film, so that we could match what the similar values are to the newer windows. So, when I run all the comm checks and energy calculations, that's something we could look at.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be great. Let me see here, knowing, I, I also had a question about how you would store kind of snow, but knowing that it feels like you have more parking than you need, I'm assuming the snow removal would not be, or snow, or storing snow?
So our snow storage plan, we actually show it on our, our proposed conditions plan.
You know what sheet that is?
So our snow storage is along the rear of the property line. So there's actually a, a pretty significant area beyond the parking spaces between that and where the DT, DPW resides behind us.
Exactly.
That whole span is our snow storage.
Okay.
And in the event that we have a very significant winter, if we need to rehaul offsite, but.
Okay.
We don't find that, that that will be necessary.
Okay.
And it's actually where we store the snow now.
Okay, great.
We, we clear the entire parking lot even though nobody uses it.
Okay, Member Nataula, go back to you before we head over to the.
I just had one question she just brought up about the walkway with the stone dust, how, how are you gonna handle that in the winter, is that gonna be tough to?
So it, it will be cleared in the same way that the walkways will be cleared, so, you know, a little different, you know, we probably wouldn't have, I, I don't know how we, you, you wouldn't really treat with snow melt per se, but.
Yeah, you don't, so.
Brian can speak to this.
Yeah, I mean, snow removal for walkways, pedestrian ways are always done by hand, maybe a snow blower, stone dust is no different.
I was just curious of that.
Thank you, Member Nataula.
Thank you.
I'll head over, if you're all set.
I have one more.
Okay, go for it.
Are they, are you currently allowed to take a left out of that?
Yes.
And do you have concerns about with an increased amount of tenants trying to take a left out of that?
I don't, you know, during the DCM meeting, you know, the police department was there, they talked about, they actually commented through viewpoint on the stop sign, but we also had a conversation openly about traffic and, and, excuse me, you know, distances, visibility and the only thing that they really were interested in is making sure that our landscape plan didn't interfere with visibility. But other than that, they felt very comfortable and as somebody who goes in and out of that parking lot on a daily basis, more often sometimes than just once, I feel very comfortable continuing with it being as it is. I mean, our, our tenant safety, our employee safety is paramount to us and we don't have any concerns personally. That, thank you.
Okay. Member LaRue, anything?
Thank you. I, I echo our chair and vice chair, excellent presentation. I, I'm really very pleased to hear about your plans for green roofing and I wonder if you could tell me a little bit more about what you have planned.
Do you wanna speak to the green roofing?
The green roofing. I'm sorry, I missed that word. So we, I installed this at a couple of different properties.
If, I wonder if people could drag the microphones just over there, it would be great when you do that. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Just for the folks at home.
So, yeah, we're, we're exploring different options, but with the steel structural system and the membrane roofing that we have proposed at that la, at that level, we feel we can gain access there with some sort of a decking system that would allow people to use part of that outside space. It's not a huge space, but it's enough area where you could have some deck and then if they're maybe in the corners or on some of the sides of that to give it a little bit more of a, a comfortable feeling, instead of feeling like you're on a roof. You, we have installed different types of modular tray systems that actually have drainage in them and they don't require a lot of maintenance, they don't require a lot of watering or any watering, it's all rainwater for those type of plantings. So, Trina and I and some of the other team members have been talking about utilizing that at this location. So, you know, it's, it's a nice thing to do for the environment, number one, but it's also if you're out on that deck surface, we feel like it would be a lot better than just kind of sitting on a roof and give it a little bit more of a, a comfortable feeling with a little bit of green around you, so break up the day with lunch. Yeah, that was the idea.
It sounds very nice, I'm, I was just curious, thank you for expanding on that a little bit and that's all I have.
Thank you, Member LaRue, Member Cavino? Member Cavino?
Yeah, most of, almost all my questions have been asked by my fellow members. Thank you. But I do have a curiosity question. You're gonna add three stories to this two-story building, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you just gonna plop the three stories on top of what's there now? Or it's a slab on grade, I assume now, or...
Yes, it's a slab on grade, and it is a shallow concrete foundation system.
Because there's, excuse me, there's, is there a rock? Is that what it's sitting on?
No, it's just on soils.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just a shallow foundation system. It's only four feet below frost to the bottom of the footing.
Right.
So, in this particular case, it is a steel frame structure, and we've identified all of the different steel members that are in the existing building. However, of course, it was designed for a two-story building. So, one of the reasons that we were asking for the 66 feet of height is we're actually keeping the existing roof structure that is there. And the reason that that gray band that you see is a little bit wider at that level is because we're actually putting a whole new floor system across there to span. So, and then we're building the additional floors above that. However, there's a lot more gravity or lateral loads that will be coming down to those existing footings. So, at those point loads where those columns are, the concrete slab and footing will have to be excavated, expanded, underpinned with reinforcing bars and new concrete. So, it's a fairly substantial engineering calculation, all of that, but it's very workable. It's...
Thank you. As I said, just curiosity.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Cavino. I had the same question with regard to the additional structural content you had to do for the additional three floors. My question would be on the floor aerial ratio that was provided by the Board of Appeals. What's that number?
We're .58. From... .58, yeah.
.58, and what's the existing condition on that?
.26.
.26.
.26 is the existing condition? Thank you. And just a question again on the impervious versus pervious. With the concrete pad, that is included in gaining that 401 square feet? The concrete pad to left with the...
You're talking about the patio area conservation?
Yeah, yeah, over that area.
It's being removed.
Okay, and that counts towards your 401?
The reduction, yep.
Yes.
And just questions to staff, actually. With the new parking requirements we have, would that change anything on the site?
So, those have not been...
I understand, yeah.
I don't, I don't believe, well, yes, that it would because we're increasing the size of the building.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, but...
So, they're saying they need the spaces to be compliant to what our current parking...
Oh, so, the, what is being proposed and brought to town meeting is not reducing this, the number for office space?
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, okay, thank you. That's all I had. I'm gonna open this up to the public. So, is there anyone from the public that wants to say anything about this particular application? None, okay? That being said, we have any motion to continue this?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this public hearing to the Planning Board meeting of May 16, 2024.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I beg, since there are any issues, I know my client would want me to ask this. Is there any way, because we've answered all the questions, that we could close and get a vote tonight?
And I say that only because Christine knows me well. So, you know, our hope this evening is really, you know, as we really tried to do, you know, we put together, you know, a thoughtful presentation. We hope to answer all of the questions. We hope and believe that this is a super, you know, positive addition to Burlington and that you would be able to support this project this evening and vote affirmatively under the condition that Conservation Commission approves and the notice of intent moves forward at the May 9 meeting.
Okay. Staff, is that your thoughts on that?
I am...
Subject to...
I mean, I would not feel comfortable. We, you know, I don't have a decision for you guys written yet, so you wouldn't be able to vote on anything.
Okay.
And, you know, being that this is a sensitive area and we want to make sure that CONCOM doesn't change the site plan any, I understand, you know, it was an amazing presentation and this is, you know, you know, I understand and, you know, but, you know, I think that if we, since we don't have a specific decision for you guys to vote on, I wouldn't feel comfortable with that. But obviously, it's up to you guys, but that's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you, yeah. So, if we don't have a decision to vote on, we wouldn't be able to do that. But I think for the next time, we would be probably ready for that with Conservation.
And just as I, forgive me, please, just as I'm becoming familiar with Burlington, you know, I do a lot of these meetings in various other towns, and, you know, a lot of times, the vote and the approval is based on, you know, the plans as presented, so that the basis of the decision is based on the actual presentation and what was submitted here today.
Yeah, and typically, we do have to vote on a decision that is provided to us. We don't have that tonight, so that's, we weren't, we're planning on it. And typically, we do, you know, hear the proposal and then tip, on applications of these sites, don't typically vote on that, just in the first go.
Mr. Chair, I also don't, because, you know, this is first opening and it's a large site plan, I don't even think we have, do we even have? Yeah, we don't even have comments from DPW yet. So, one of the things that we do is in our site plan decisions and all of our decisions, all the comments from the other departments get put into...
The main decision.
The main decision, and that is what the Board votes on. So, I think that we're, you know, engineering is, I think, waiting before, again, probably waiting to see if there's any changes to the basin, I would assume. So, you know, that's another kind of thing that we would want to do, but...
Okay.
Well, I mean, that, my thing would be where CONCOM is on it. But it's the other thing. I really want to hear what they have to say. I think it's a sensitive area.
It is.
So, I understand we need to continue. I'd be curious to understand, you know, assuming that Conservation is supportive and DPW and other departments don't have any concerns, what the Board's perspective is on this project.
Yeah, so, we, yeah, we don't typically, you know, poll the Board on, until we have our decisions in front and things from the other Board. So, but I think what you've heard from the Board, I don't think you've heard anything really negative that might be any sort of showstopper as you've kind of addressed most of our concerns there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna keep the public aspect...
I made a motion.
Oh, you made a motion.
Yeah, and I seconded.
We're gonna keep that open, the public hearing, right? In case anybody wants to...
We're just continuing it, yes.
Right, thank you. Motion seconded?
Sixteen.
Okay.
Just seconded. I seconded.
Okay, the motion is seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Any knows? We'll call it a six-zero-zero.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Who knows for trying?
Right. All right. So, other matters we...
Good, thank you. Have a good one.
For discussion, we have an extension of time for Patricia Way definitive subdivision. Do you have anybody here to discuss that? We do. Okay. I wish they were out there, and if you wouldn't mind stating your name.
If you want, just for refreshment.
When they're ready?
Phyllis Etzel.
Phyllis Etzel, hello, Phyllis.
Robert Murray, to request an extension for the Patricia Way subdivision.
Can you just speak then to the microphone, Phyllis, when you get situated? Thank you.
Phyllis Etzel, and I'm here for Robert Murray requesting an extension of the Patricia Way subdivision.
Okay. Yeah, or Phyllis, you want to give us some detail on that? Where that is?
Caleb's bringing up the plan. It was previously done, was it 2019?
I see 2018.
2018. And so, this is property that is kind of up and behind the used bookstore, if you remember that, and it's a subdivision. And I think it's five or six houses. It's a cul-de-sac, and it, it's a, you guys approved it, or the Board approved it back then. And so, this is just, you know, seeking a continuance for it. And I don't know, I guess I'll throw it back to you, Mr. Chair or the applicant, for kind of...
Thank you. I'm just, just a question as I look at that. What's, that's, is that street on the left-hand side, what's that street?
This is Taylor Avenue.
Oh, this is Taylor?
Yep.
Okay.
That's this way.
Okay.
It's been a while. It's been a while.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, any, anyone from the Board? I'll go start with Barbara this way, and then Ernie?
I don't have any concerns. I remember this, actually, and it's just been delayed, is my understanding.
Okay.
Do you know, Phyllis, when you expect this to move forward?
Well, I did want to explain that I was here last year, and at this point, the subdivision is at a point where we had, we've cut down all the trees in the right-of-way. We've installed all the erosion controls, and there is a stone apron at Taylor Avenue. The, there was a pole, a utility pole in the right-of-way that has been moved, relocated to the side. So, we were actually ready to start work. And then last June, I had contacted Eversource. We had their design. We also had the communications company's designs also. And we were actually ready to proceed with beginning excavation of the road. And I was told that there was a shortage of pad mounts transformers and that we would not be able to get them. And so, therefore, that presented a real problem. And I saw how real the problem was because we had a three-lot subdivision in Winchester for which we needed one. And it took months. I'm not quite sure how we got it, but we got it.
We're not asking.
And on McSweeney Way, that was an underground service which called for, the design also called for a transformer. And, but after talking about it and telling them we needed to proceed and, you know, just finally, one of the engineers came out and he redesigned McSweeney Way so that we're going to be able to service that one house with two handholds from the transformer on the pole, so we didn't need a new transformer. So, there we were. And of course, it's a big expense to excavate a road and put conduit in and drainage, et cetera, and then not be able to binder it because you haven't, you don't have transformers in yet. So, Mr. Murray waited. And I'm sorry to say that today, I think the situation is better. But I did contact our representative again, and she said, "All pad mounts are backordered. I don't have any good advice or know when the supply issues will ease up." The notice we got said that they didn't expect supply issues to ease up until the end of '24.
Wow, okay.
But this is better than what I heard last year. Last year, they just said, "No, when we can't do it. We don't have them." And I know other people, we're having the same issues. It's all over. So, here we are. I mean, it's a good time to build, and yet...
Yeah, you can't get there. Any other members have any comments?
No.
So, Ms. Etzel, thank you for the update to that. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the request from Murray Hills, Inc. for an extension of time to complete the buildout of the Patricia Way definitive subdivision from May 4, 2024 to May 4, 2026, as requested by the applicant.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Six-zero.
Wish us luck.
There you are. Good luck. Let's hope they're not coming into Maryland, you know, to buy both from Maryland.
Right, Baltimore, right?
Oh, you're right.
They could, they could be, right? Big court. Okay, great. Next, next up, thank you, thank you, Phyllis. Next up is the declaration of completion of a definitive subdivision. This is 68 Wilmington Road IPA Development Company, LLC. Staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is a saga. So, Caleb's gonna bring it up. This subdivision is a subdivision due to like a pork chop lot. So, this property is on Wilmington Road, I think, just down from the 62 Plaza. And it is...
Oh, yeah.
Already remembers. It actually is the driveway, if you remember, some of you might, the driveway has a bridge going over a stream.
I know the point that it is.
You got, yeah. So, they're finally done, and CONCOM is all set with them. And so, now, they basically built one house. The reason why it was a subdivision was because access, making sure that there was adequate access. And so, you guys granted the subdivision. It just took years and years and years to complete. Because there is no public road as part of this subdivision, we don't have any covenant or bonds or money being held for this. So, I think all that we're missing is a motion from the Board, and then it should be...
Close that up?
Close it up.
Okay. Is there a motion? Are any questions for us? Is, any questions?
Was there another house back there?
There is, yeah.
Yes, there is. You can see.
Same house, yeah.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, there's a house back there, and then the new one is, you can see, and here.
Yeah, I don't think they can go back any further because I think it just... Okay, any other comments? No? Well, I'll take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion in consideration of the work within the 68 Wilmington Road definitive subdivision. The Planning Board hereby declares the subdivision to be complete.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Six-zero-zero, thank you. Next I have on there is a Planning Board picture at May 16, Planning Board meeting. If we can get all the staff members...
We're gonna have to move that to the June 6 meeting.
We have somebody that's not gonna be here?
I'm not, sorry.
Enjoy your...
Yeah, enjoy your vacation.
So, we'll plan on the June 6 meeting, and if...
June 6.
As the, as, we're assuming that everyone will be there. And if not, we'll push it to the next meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. So, we'll just give, maybe a heads up if anybody's not gonna make the June 6, just so they don't have to get all dressed up there. And the, any correspondences?
Not of note, nope.
Okay, reports from Town Council?
Nope.
Okay. Subcommittee reports? Anybody with a Subcommittee report? Barbara, please.
Lots going on with the Sculpture Park. We are working on our third installation that will come in in summer 2024. The submissions are currently with the students at the elementary and high school. We are waiting for their input before the committee makes its final selections. The School of Rock will be performing at the Sculpture Park on Saturday, May 11. And the Pigs on Parade will be starting on June 22 and will continue throughout the summer.
Thank you.
Can you, can I ask Barbara to explain Pigs on Parade?
Yes. Pigs on Parade is a fundraiser and community event that we are planning. Much like Cow Parade that was on Boston Common last year, the Sculpture Park Committee has purchased very large fiberglass pigs.
How large is very large? Six feet, five feet?
They're about five feet long, three or four feet high. They come in different, in different shapes, and then we have piglets as well. The pigs are being sponsored by local communities who are hiring artists to paint them in a way that represents their business or their industry. They'll be installed in the Common, and they'll be there all summer. They're gonna be bright and colorful and fun. The reason we're doing pigs is because in 1799, when Burlington was incorporated, the major industry in Burlington was pig farming. So, it is a, an homage to our agricultural past. The piglets are available to small businesses and nonprofits, and the large pigs are available to other businesses. And they're pretty darn cute. They finally arrived by truck yesterday. And those who have not yet been paid for are living in my garage.
What do you feed them?
No feeding, no feeding at peace.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, anybody else with Subcommittee reports? Yes, thank you.
I just wanted, on the housing partnership, they ended up having a lottery on April 17. They had 31 applicants that were eligible, and they did the lottery for 119 South Bedford Street. So, that was really good. They finally found somebody to, you know...
Yep.
You know, somebody lucky got to.
That's great.
Get a reasonable.
So Recreation Commission, there is, there was a, a master plan meeting, what date was that? I forget what day that was. That was Monday, maybe? It was Monday. And we had a good turnout there, and a lot of good feedback on kind of that master plan for, for recreation. You know, a listing of what you had for field use and potential for those, and what, we heard back from the, the community on surveys that they had. With regard to the list of, of subcommittees that we have, why don't we wait till we have a full board? We'll have a list of who's doing what currently, and then we can kind of relook at that.
So, so, Mr. Chair, so what I put in here was everybody who is currently on, so I guess by, the, the reason for putting that on the staff report was just, you know, here's who's there. I don't know, you know, it's up to you if we want to shuffle things, open things up, change it around. But we can, but I just wanted to make sure everybody kind of knew what, what was available, what we're on, and then, you know.
Okay.
If I may.
Sure.
We're missing the school ones.
Yes, we're missing.
So, say the police one?
Thank you.
Fox Hill.
One, Jack's.
Police.
Oh, police committee.
And also, I'm on the.
Oxmo School.
Yes.
Want to be on that?
No.
M-PAC?
I'm on that.
MAPC, okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. So we can get a comprehensive.
This was the most recent list we had, that we got, put it together.
We need to add to this.
So the Fox.
If he can't make it, he's going to call me.
Okay, that's okay.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, no, we can just.
Police school and MAPC. And if anybody else is on.
Fox Hill High School, police.
Yeah. Okay, great. And we've got a comprehensive list, and you guys can take a look at it, see if you liked it, if you like what you're doing.
I have gone to a few of their meetings, but then I've given them my email to email me things, and I never received any.
Is that Boyanders?
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know if they.
Okay, so I was, okay, so it is, so that question mark, thank you, Tony, and for reminding.
Yeah, so I don't know who it is.
Yeah, communication, okay.
I will reach out to David Waddilla.
I did give him my number, David. I've given him my email, so I don't know.
Okay. Any unfinished business?
Let me just, sorry, Joe, go ahead. I think we need to reach out to the Board of Appeals, because I think there's a little bit of an issue as to whether they are acknowledging that we have a subcommittee on their.
Okay.
Okay, um, yes. So I remember that was, that came up last year. I'll double, I'll double-check with them, just, just, I mean, it's more like a liaison thing.
Yeah.
It's, it's not, you know, we're not checking up on them or anything.
No, but I think it's, I think they need to understand, because I, I think they've, have all these years have never understood, or never knew that they had any.
They have no technical support, so I think we're happy to support that.
They should consider the resource.
Exactly right.
Yeah. So, you know, I, I think if they have a new chair, I did speak with the previous chair. If they have a new chair, I can reach out to them again about that.
The new chair is Jeff DeBona.
Jeff DeBona, okay. Perfect. Good to know.
All right. Unfinished business. I don't see any new business. I've got a couple of things before I turn it over. There was a request to attend a Chamber of Commerce meeting. I've got the email here. It's, it's going to be May 6 at 9:00 a.m., and they're requesting, the, they're, they're getting feedback from the business community, perspectives on housing, zoning, transportation, commercial property valuations, and more. And they want to have started dialogue with town staff, boards, and committees. So they're inviting all committees and, and staff to Reamir and Bronstein at 9:00 a.m. on May 6, to have a, I guess, a general gathering. So it's not a formal town, but the town departments will be there, I guess, or most of them, if they're going to accept. So I was planning to go. I don't know if anybody else has interest.
I would like to, if.
Okay, Jess.
I wish I could, but I'm off on Friday because of my vacation.
Oh, sure, sure.
If I take.
Yeah, no, that's fair.
If it had been a different day, I would love to.
Jess, I'll go. And just the two of us will give you, we'll give you some feedback. I, you know, I'm just going to be sit there as, I don't, I'm not sure what it's really specifically about, because it's not, it's just general terms here. So we'll sit there, we'll listen, we'll take notes, and we'll get back to you on what, what happens.
I think it's good. I've opened dialogue, it's good.
Oh, it's always good. Right. And staff, staff, are you going to attend?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So I, just so you guys are aware, I do go to the government affairs, Burlington Area Chamber Government Affairs meeting every month, so they have that. And so we, we do sit on that, and Melissa Tantakas also goes, and it's just, it's a, it is, it's a really good group of people, and we have that open dialogue. So.
So this seems to be that and maybe.
And a little bit more.
A little more on steroids, perhaps?
Yeah, and I can, I can also reach out to Rick Parker tomorrow and just kind of, you know.
What specifically?
Get the vibe.
What's driving it?
Yeah.
What I, I always, when I get into these things in the very general, I've always asked, "What problem are we trying to solve?" So it's very, so we can kind of hone down and be specific on it, right?
And can you just send me the where?
I will give you, yeah, I'll send you that email, yeah.
Still an old, new, new business, an old business?
Yeah, sure, we can go, this is new business.
We have our business.
I just had, I just had one more thing.
Funny business?
Yeah, one more thing, Joe, if you wouldn't mind. There was a request through the People Helping People. They have a Family Feud coming up, I think it's September 21st, and they're asked, they're looking for kind of town boards if they want to be one of the eight Family Feud teams. So it, there is a cost, minimal cost per person to, to join on that. And I was wondering if the planning board had any interest in being, it's, it's five people. Unfortunately, you can't get all seven.
I'll do it.
And it doesn't have to be planning board members, but, you know, if anybody's interested, if we have a couple, we can always add kind of plus ones or something like that.
Sounds like funny.
You're in?
Oh, yes.
You're in? Anybody else in?
Sure.
Ernie's in?
Why not?
Well, when is it, September?
September 21st. So if we, if we have four, we're looking, we can, we can figure it out, the rest. So I'll tell them, yes, I'll, I'll front the money, and then you guys can push me back.
And what time is it at?
What's that?
What, what time is it at?
It's five to eight on a Saturday night.
Saturday?
Yep. Five to eight.
Okay, yeah.
Five to eight.
We have, so we have, we have, we have one, two, three.
Five to eight.
So if we, we'll go forward with that.
People Helping People, so where, where do we got to go?
It's over to Bill Ricker, Alex.
People Helping People.
Yeah.
Or bring them under the pigs, we could do that.
Right.
Oh, man, that sounds like fun.
Okay, so that's what I had. Joe, or anybody else, we'll start with Joe for new business.
So just a question, Liz, and you guys, do you, do you know any idea of the, the auto repair place across from Simons? Now, I was, I, my understanding is they want to do some enhancements over there, which I would love to see.
Yeah.
I actually spoke with them last week about that.
Okay.
And he told me that he has some old plans that he was going to pull, and I suggested that he bring them in and meet with staff to see if what he wants to do is feasible.
Yeah.
I don't think that he's done that yet.
No, but we've, I've pulled the folder in our office of what the old plans are. So, you know, I'm, I, you know, we're always willing to help them. I think it's a good, I think it's a good, good thing to do. They are kind of one of the only auto repair places.
Well, I, you know, the bottom line is, it's a, it's a great location.
Yep.
If it's done the right way.
Absolutely.
And it's, and I think they've, my understanding in speaking with them is that they've had some restrictions, that they've had some issues that, you know, that forced them to do things that maybe they didn't want to do, or that we didn't want them to do. And, you know, I, and I look in the back over there as I drive by, and it's, it's, there's no pavement back there. Is there a reason why there's no pavement back there?
I do not know the answer to that question. I can find out, though.
I don't think there was supposed to be anything back there, Joe. I think maybe that's why there's no pavement. Behind the building, I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was supposed to go out.
Well, there's that cemetery there, too.
My green space, yeah. I mean, was it supposed to be green space or something back?
There was somebody storing concrete farms there for a while, and then.
Schofield, that Schofield was in there, wasn't it?
Yeah, way back.
Is it the same owner now that's been for like the past 10 years anyway?
I think so.
I think 10 years, probably.
So was there, was there a modification of the plan and any conditions on that with regard to the owners?
I don't think they ever completed that last site plan, actually.
Because it would have been a non-conforming use to get approved there versus the concrete, so there must have been something back, and I wouldn't.
The concrete farms were, weren't supposed to be there.
Okay, so if they, if the, the auto repair shop come before this for a non, non-conforming use?
We'd have to make a section of finding, yep.
So we have a history of there's, if there's any conditions on that with regard to that backspace?
I can look into it.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so I guess my concern, might not a concern, is my, more of, you know, we want them to be able to do business there, but we also want them to not be doing it.
Right on front.
Right in front of the center.
Right in town center.
Right, and with cars on jacks and things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If there's some sort of accommodations, we could work with them on to try to get them what they need to be able to do the, the business that they need to be able to survive and, you know, be, be an asset to the town, be able to, you know, people, it's a great location for people, a central location for people to bring their vehicles.
Right out, take the bus.
Yeah, and, and to be able to, you know, make money enough to, to keep going there and us.
We would want to be consistent, too. And we have the new auto parts store in the center of town as well, and we, we are not allowing any outside repair.
Right.
Right? So we want to be consistent to everybody.
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
That's right. I mean, and it's, you know, and again, I'm not trying to restrict their been, being able to do business. I'd rather accommodate that somehow, but in a way that's going to be, you know, an enhancement to the center of town as well.
And per the county master, yes.
I did have some discussions with the owner. It was his desire to beautify the front and get all of the work behind. He had been told in the past that he couldn't do that, but he didn't know why.
Okay, let's find out.
Or he couldn't remember why. So that's why I suggested he meet with staff, because I think what he wants to do, sounds like it would be of benefit to the town.
Yeah, absolutely.
Whether or not it can be done, I don't know.
So, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, our doors are open.
Right, and he.
Email us, come by anytime. We can, we can talk at the room, yeah.
I'll follow up with him, because he said he was going to pull those plans, and then I told him we could make an appointment.
Just make an appointment or email. I mean, we can send him what we have, too. We do this public, right?
Yeah, I think he just got probably, you know, busy.
Oh, yeah, of course, of course, of course.
Great.
But now that we're talking about.
Yeah, Joe, you also with that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Auto uses. Any update on O'Reilly Auto Parts?
Oh, I'd be, be glad to give an update. Within the past week or so, I have gone down to O'Reilly's to check out the site to ensure final compliance with all the different conditions that have been put forth by the planning board in the past. They have now put in all their final landscaping, the awnings have been installed, and right over there is the final Mylar of the site plan. So once that is taken care of, planning will be able to give a sign-off in their viewpoint file. And I know that they have started stocking within the past week or so. So they, so that the hope would be, once this has been taken care of, and whatever final inspections that the building inspectors have to do, that that should be opening very soon. Don't want to give an exact timeline, but their intent, I know that the property owner wants to open as soon as possible, so that, this is one of the, the final steps that need to happen. And then they'll be open for business right in town center.
Excellent. Thank you.
Speaking of almost completion items, I also just wanted to, I mean, I drive by frequent, frequenting Trader Joe's, and I'm driving by a lot the construction of Noria, and I just did want to comment of the amount of times I have driven by that's been under construction, and just how clean and well-done the construction was. I just did want to put that out there publicly, because I thought they did a great job with that, with minimal interruptions, and just, it always looked very nice. So, I mean, it looks near completion. I don't know.
I, I could also give a positive update, that next to the O'Reilly Mylars, there's a set of Noria plans that, if those are signed, they're in the, that was going to be one of their last steps for completion, as well as providing hazbales to the town, and then again, building inspectors to do their final walkthrough of the site, and that that, they should also be opening shortly as well.
Thank you. Just real quick, I do want to just update on that Chamber of Commerce meeting. That is, sorry, that is, that is by Zoom as well. So if anybody wants to attend by Zoom, instead of being there in person, let me know and I'll forward you that information.
The other thing, Mr. Chairman, you might want to get interested in, I don't know if you've been to any of the Middle 63 meetings.
I have not.
Sometimes they have interesting subjects, which, you know, sometimes transportation.
Thank you.
They're more general area than they are Burlington-specific, but the, it's interesting to see developers, engineers, architects on a, and other planning people, and administration people from the various towns around here, and to meet them on a more informal basis.
And do, do we know when those meetings are, as staff, do you?
I can forward, so I just wrote a note, I'm, I'm going to forward them to you. So they're, every so often, so it's really, they have a transportation, a transportation management arm, and then also kind of an economic development, global economic development, and they go, they work with, you know, UMass Lowell and Economic Lowell and Up and Lowell, all the